Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Commissioners' Meeting, 4/21/22. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, approve the minutes, April 7th, counts payable vouchers and payroll docking. Make motion to approve the minutes, accounts payable vouchers and payroll docking.
The second is that motion.
Discussion or comments, all of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have Mr. Jack Kraus here from our jail. Change orders. Jack, are you ready, sir?
I guess so.
You've got it already here to me.
So I explained this, and this is probably more for Sarah's sake than you guys, but the way Chairman does this, each contractor on the project will have sequentially numbered change orders. So change order three for Polley Jail may be change order four for different contractors. So that's why the number exists, is what it is. I brought two copies of four change orders, same each one, and I'll keep one in here and take one there. The first one is Polley Jail, who's a detention equipment contractor, and there's two items on their change orders. The first item is the control doors and what have you. If you remember, we're going to put a restroom under central control in that secondary nurses station. Should have been, you just overlooked it. Anyway, the cost is $1,880 for the door and all the control mechanisms. The other item is, you'll see there, the 16-6 is for the recording capability of the intercom system. In other words, anytime the officer picks up a radio, it might somebody else will be recorded. I don't know how good or bad that is. It'd be real good if you find yourself in a lawsuit, if not. But at this point, everybody apparently is affirmed, go ahead and do it again. So the total change order obviously is 1,8575. So if you'd sign those two, and I'll send the next two in, that's change order three for Polley. He's got all the backup stuff and other stuff.
Place for it. That was better. What, I didn't bring my place signed there. It's on the back page.
Please move.
Place signed.
Right there on the page.
That would be?
The upper right signature block, right there.
Again, Mr. President.
Do you have the ability, corporation?
Come on.
The next change order is Hussing Mechanical. It's a coincidence, as there is its number three as well, but as we move forward, these will get out of sync, some are, I'm sure. And the Hussing Mechanical change order, way back when, if you remember, we eliminated, we kept one.
Yep.
We eliminated a lot of fire rated glass. Now strangely enough, same glass, one they put the seal on it, the other one they don't put the seal on it, don't ask me why. But in order to do that, we had to modify the sprinkler system. Now, we got a $250,000 credit, if I remember right, about, for that glass credit. What Hussing is doing now is putting a sprinkler back in to make adjustments for the glass. So it seems somewhat expensive with the 73-570, here on the list. But remember, we're still netting $175,000 or some such number. So all in all, that's a fairly good deal, I think. And then, of course, the other part is adding that toilet room, the swimming portion of the toilet room, and that's the 25. So there overall is 98-588. Next one is Link Electric, and of course, by definition, they're the electricians on the job. Let's see. There was a whole series of modifications at Kenworth Shittuck on the door controls, and that's what you're seeing there, that 21-4. And then, of course, the cost of electrical work in the bathroom is the 557-53. And the IT upgrades, which Bob was a party to during all those meetings. I'm not sure we've settled on a provider, have we yet?
No.
Okay. Anyway, that's the 64, 116 in total.
Which one is this? That's different. This, 1036, this is 1030.
You've got an E&amp;H contract here. They sent one too fast.
Same two.
Okay. You should have two of your, your guy.
Look at your change order numbersheet.
Yeah, they gave you one out of sync. Okay, the last one is E&amp;H Construction. These are the firm that does the general construction on the project. And they're developing the toilet room, the hard construction portion of it. There was also a mistake, so it led to believe that they had sound panels in the back of the intake area, but they were fabric. Well, fabric isn't intake radius, doesn't work too well. So that's why they changed it to tekton. Now, if you know what tekton is, it looks like stringy stuff that's been pressed together. A lot of times you'll see it in the ceiling of gyms. It's a sound absorbing, nothing. So that's the 10-490. And then, the other two items are site condition. If you remember, we put extra stone in the back for drop area, and we closed the loop on the drive all the way around the jail. Picture this, in two weeks, three weeks, the cells are going to start showing up, and they show up in a big semi flatbed. And back there, the semis don't have a lot of trucker on crew and stuff, so as approved thing, we didn't want to plug the system, so now the trucks can just loop as they supply the jail all the way around. And of course, there's been other things, and stone added. Those two, remember, we have three budgets here, for the most part. We have the contingency for most of this is coming out of. We have the general conditions, which is items that typically would be the stone in the backlot, those oddball things you expect. And the third one is, we have allowances in the actual contractor's contract. So where did the money come to, somewhat incidental and stuff? To me, these next two items probably should have come out of general conditions, because that's what the lineback is intended for. But he's pulling out a contingency, so I don't think it's a radical thing. Now, we're out of the dirt, thank God, which is where all of the expense is typically. And as the change order continue to flow, and they will, they would become probably more prevalent, much smaller. You know, little doors ring this way, and a lot that way, and a light fixture, and so. May 16th is the scheduled date for the delivery of the cells. The two man cells will show up on flatbeds from Georgia, North Atlanta. There's three cells to a semi, each cell weighs 6,000 pounds. The ironworkers will be here prior to that date, laying out the floor inside the cell area, chalk marks, and weld points and all that. And I don't know whether they'll take them off with a little hydro crane or a big forklift and get one of the others. They stack one each other, they put them on what's called a skate, but it's really not more than a big dally, heavy dally. And the ironworkers will push it into place, jack it off the dallies, sort it, line it up, tack weld it to the floor of the dump, one right after another. So it'll just be this constant line of semis from Georgia. You have 137 of them coming. And those cells represent the singular lighter item cost wise in the jail. The Dex contract's about 12 million, and these cells are at least two thirds of that number, is a singular item.
But they're complete.
They're all down in their city in a warehouse in.
What, plumbing and electrical.
Right. Now, I'm pushing like crazy, because I want that roof on C, because I don't want that roof dripping water on my wonderful cells. Now, it wouldn't be the first time we'd have a great disk we know the cells, the roof ties closed. We're doing our best to make sure that we get the water out of there. We don't have a problem. I don't think they'll bring the intake cells yet, because they're really not ready for those. There's about eight of those, I think. But the primary cells will be here done and in place. Then we lock the doors, and nobody's allowed to walk into them. Couldn't be a move these guys use it for lunch, and the storage. Electrician's store has wire in there, can't be able to do that. That's the game plan. We're pretty much on track.
It's a long day.
Yeah. We had a little discussion there. Masons are doing an unusually good job. In theory, they should be working, probably given the number of masons they have in two different areas. There was talk that they were going to put them on the outside doing veneer work, brick. They said, I'm not real wild about doing the brick, we're not done with the interior vertical stuff. We're working through that, and there'll probably be a discussion on Thursday coming up. So all in all, I think it's going really well. All the shop drawings are done, with the exception of a half dozen like landscaping, you know, what clamings they're going to use and that kind of stuff. All the serious stuff's done. Hussing has all your mechanical equipment in storage waiting to go into the project. Again, because we said we'll pay for storage materials, thank God. One of the questions right now is this UV light situation. I'm doing my research, I've never done it. I've never put a UV light in an air handler. It's becoming more and more prevalent now because of this COVID thing. And I don't know whether you guys know this or not, but when bacteria pass over UV light, it kills it. We use UV light all the time in swimming pool water. So we're, we have UV light in the units now for the condensate drains and the coils only. But these that we're proposing to use will actually be UV lights tubes, look like fluorescent tubes, that pass through the air handler, and the air goes across them. As the air goes across, it kills bacteria, the COVID, if you will. So, but it's expensive.
It's going to kill 99% of the airborne.
Yeah. So we're trying to sort of put the value to the cost and see where that's all going. I was supposed to be at a seminar on UV light yesterday, but that was at another seminar, but I'm glad to get all the information, we'll see. But ultimately, that'll be your best decision. You certainly can afford it.
Philip could look that up, Ed, and tell us the cost.
Yeah. But his cost is sort of a ballpark now, but.
Right.
I have got a link to the guy that actually supplies UV light and stuff. Of course, he's going to give me the sales pitch, and I'll try to get through the good and the bad. Anyway.
I got one to check with.
On the subject, it would seem to be a good deal.
And that'll be a kind of very good.
Given the alternatives, it's close to down to COVID. That's all I have for now, unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks for being on the podium.
Not a problem.
And seeing stuff where we know what we're looking at.
No, you're okay. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Next up, Cemetery Board appointment. He's agreed to serve.
He's agreed. Wanda was okay with him.
Yeah, Wanda called it. She's wanting to fill Bob Jacobson's term.
Make motion to appoint Mike Moore to the Cemetery Board. What's the point?
The second day.
All right, no more question or comment, all in favor say aye.
Aye. If it might, Ron, that May 16th might be a little dynamic, you know? Few days before, a few days after, we get closer and closer, it'll lock down for, it's something to lock, so if you can get there, we'll see.
I got 16th marked, though.
Well, it'll take them three or four days to settle, so if you miss the first day, they'll be back.
137 semis.
Yeah.
Should we have a parade?
No. Parade. Be careful. Yeah. I have an appointment here for the Insurance Board, Lindsey Webb. Fine. Yeah. Department Director.
So we accept the appointment of Lindsey Webb to the County Employee Insurance Board to fulfill tangential terms that expire the end of this year, December the first, 2022.
We'll say we get that motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. All right. Health and Human Relations Commission Resolution.
So it was, there was a part or an action item in our comprehensive plan, and someone has, I think it was slated to be a couple years down the road, but we've had some folks approach us about it, and so we thought it would be, it was, it was something that we could do. I mean, it wasn't going to take a lot of funding, it was something that we can, we could go ahead and start. So this is a resolution that we'll have to have a couple readings over, but if you want to do it, me too.
You start off, I'll do page two.
Okay, you do page two. All right, so Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, establishing the Jefferson County Health and Human Relations Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County wishes to establish a Health and Human Relations Commission to support the promotion and development of a community which functions as one and with equality and dignity for each citizen of Jefferson County. And therefore be it result, Section 1, Health and Human Relations Commission. It is the desire of Jefferson County, Indiana, to promote health, welfare, and security. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners now establishes the Jefferson County Health and Human Relations Commission to promote positive human relations, respect, and integrity of every individual. Section 2, number and appointment of commission. The commission shall consist of seven members. All appointees to the commission shall, should represent community members who engage in promoting health and/or anti-discrimination in the community. All appointees must be residents of Jefferson County. Initial membership. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint four commission members, one of whom shall be designated as Board of Commissioners appointee to serve an initial two-year term. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint three members, one of whom shall be designated as a Board of Commissioners appointee to serve an initial one-year term. Ongoing membership. Thereafter, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint two Board of Commissioners appointee members following the completion of a term or vacancy. The remaining five commission members will be nominated by existing commission members to the Board of Commissioners for appointment following completion of a term or vacancy. Members shall serve two-year terms. Commission nominations. Each nomination made by the commission shall, one, consider all applications received at least two weeks before the appointment, attempt to nominate members of the community to create a commission that is reflective of the demographics and culture of Jefferson County, including comprehensive representation of age, gender, socioeconomic status, ethnic background, culture, and religion, and consider the prospective commission member's knowledge, experience, and causes of tension and conflict. Prospect, prospective member shall be, shall have demonstrated a commitment to fostering better human relations in Jefferson County. Public notice and, and shall be, public notice shall be given when the commission intends to nominate members to the commission. Any application form shall be accessible by the public as required by law. A record shall be kept of all applications filed for one year. Section 4, term of office. Each commission member shall serve a term of two years.
Section 5, vacancies. Vacancies shall occur on the happening of any of the following events before the expiration of the term: death of the incumbent, resignation of the incumbent, removal of the pleasure of the appointing or nominating authority, ceasing of the incumbent to be a resident of Jefferson County, or incumbent's absence for more than one-third of the regularly scheduled meetings in any 12 months or three consecutive regular meetings. When a vacancy occurs as a result of missing one-third of regularly scheduled meetings in a 112-month period or three consecutive regular meetings, vacancies shall be filled by the applicable nominating or appointing authority specified in Section 2. Section 6, organization. Officers, the commission shall select annually from its membership a chairman and a vice-chairperson and any other officers it deems necessary. Rules. The commission shall prepare and adopt the necessary rules and regulations for conduct of its business. These rules and regulations are to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Quorum. A major, a majority of members currently appointed to the commission shall constitute a quorum. A majority of members shall be required to carry any motion or proposal. Minutes. The commission shall keep written minutes of its meetings, a copy of which shall be filed with the Secretary of the Board and the Board of Commissioners. Meetings. The commission shall establish a regular meeting schedule and shall give public notice of the time and place of meetings. All meetings of the commission, including any ad hoc committee or other committees appointed by the commission, shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meetings of the commission, including any ad hoc committees or any other committees approved by the commission. The location of the commission meetings, including those of any ad hoc committees or other committees appointed by the commission, shall be determined with the consideration for equal and fair access for persons residing in all areas of the county and for geographical, socioeconomic interests in matters of to be considered at a particular meeting. Section 7. Establishment of committee. Ad hoc committees. The commission may appoint committee to carry out the functions, duties of the commission. Any committee appointed shall consist of not fewer than three members, including at least one commission member. The actions and recommendations of the committee shall not be deemed the action of the commission and shall in no way bind the commission or its members. The committee shall cease to exist or on completion of its assignment. Volunteer and consultant services. The commission may benefit from the services of volunteer workers and volunteer consultants who serve without compensation or reimbursement of expenses. Service from an individual as a volunteer worker or volunteer consultant shall not be considered as a service or, or employment by the county. Section 8, compensate, compensation. Members of the commission shall receive no compensation. Section 9, duties and responsibilities. Within 90 days of all members of the commission being appointed and confirmed, the commission members shall draft and approve by a simple majority the duties and responsibilities of the commission, subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Said duties and responsibilities may be updated or amended as needed by a simple majority vote at a 30-day notice meeting, subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Section 10, non-county funding. The commission may, with the approval of the Board of Commissioners, apply for donations, grants, or other funding from public or private sources to provide for program cost of the commission. First reading. Now, we'll see. Bobby's here.
I didn't sit in the front row, and he still found me in the back row, and I moved.
Well, I said, it's between you and Mike.
Troy.
Troy was high.
Just keep moving with me, I got you.
We got this.
You go right, I'll go right.
Where'd you found you at?
I figured I might as well just start with the big ticket item. I've been working for about a year to try and get truck pricing and find out when new trucks would be available for our dump trucks, because you guys kind of see some of my repair orders and some of my requests and things that we're dealing with to, to keep things going, especially if they're super valuable in the winter if we don't have everything going. You know, occasionally we have a part of damaged equipment. I waited till about 3 o'clock to call today, because everything just kind of kept compounding, and the main sales guy that I usually talked to was in another training meeting, so I ended up catching up with Brad, which those two kind of worked together, and Zach did call me back a little later. Kenworth is reluctant to give me a solid price, so I said, well, give me a worst case scenario, we're not going to sign any paperwork until you get everything there, but I want to get permission from you guys to be able to proceed when they do give me this number. The list price on these trucks for just the truck, the cabin chassis, is at 157-512. Then to get that up fit with everything that we need, the bed, all the hydraulics to run our cinder boxes, it does not include a cinder box. Does include the snowplow. I didn't include the, the cinder box on it right now, because we've got one we may reuse, but I may end up adding that with some other equipment money later or something. But those cinder boxes are well under 20,000, so they're not near as, they hit the rest of this truck. Source wells pricing, which is what we always go by, is good till the end of the year. The trucks won't be here until 2023. Usually, I beat source wells pricing. That total price that I just gave you, when you add those two together, comes out at 232-670. They were even uncomfortable giving me any number, but I finally was able to get something so that I could bring to you guys without looking like I hadn't done my homework. And they basically assured me that I would be well under that number. My source well number should actually put me in under 200,000. And a lot of times, they'll use that source well, and they'll have other municipality grants that they can kind of award through the manufacturers with the demand for all the trucks right now. I'm not sure that I'll see that same significant deduction, but I'm still working and negotiating on that as we go forward. Worst case scenario, I shouldn't be under $190,000 on these trucks. I wanted to go ahead and give the go-ahead for two whenever they called me and tell me that they can get them, because we're not going to get them until 2023. It seems like forever out. When I started these negotiations last year, because I planned on adding a truck last year, they were telling me then they couldn't get them two until 2023. I said, I'm not sitting on you that long. I haven't lost any time really on that side of it, but we're putting a lot of Band-Aids on a lot of corpses. Our oldest truck out there is a 1991, and it's kind of old faithful, but it's been having a little bit more idle time, but with some of the newer trucks having so much downtime, it's getting a lot more road time. And our average bills right now seem to be running $10,000 to $12,000, but if it's anything computer related or death emissions related and transmission related, and it just, everything continues to go up, and availability is getting harder and harder all the time to get anything to even fix some of the trucks. With that, I don't need any motion. All I need is, I guess, a motion to proceed, but I mean, we're not really making the motion by a truck. I'll bring that back when I get a hard number, and once I get that hard number, then I'll be able to bring that back and sign that document once they'll give me that number. That number won't change, but they couldn't give me that number yet. I said, I want the first slots available on these medium duty trucks. That's kind of the holdups. That's where I'm at. I wish I had a lot better information than that. I've been trying to get them to give me this number since February, so.
When in '23, or we?
Supposed to be first quarter, so that's January, March.
January, March.
Some of the other manufacturers won't even quote. I've asked some of them, I've been looking at used trucks, trying to figure out what to do. I was planning on buying somebody else's used truck. Most of them sell the truck because it's got a problem. And then they headed in, said, yeah, it should be good to go, and they called me and told me, but, well, we're putting the wiring harness right now. That's the beginning. Yeah, I think it's time to walk away from that one, so I'm not even going to bring you guys that much truck price, because it'll end up beating a lot of labor and repairs. That's the, but one of those will get paid for out of this year's budget, because money's already allocated in my equipment fund. The other one would be next year's money, just depending on how things worked out at the end of the year, figuring out what we need to incomer, if anything, to be able to finalize. And I've got numbers going forward as we get closer to budget season, which will be coming in June, and I'll be able to inform all the council, everything that I've kind of got going. I'm already making Heather happy.
Oh, yeah. So I can see the number when you come within August.
Proceed, trying to get something grave and stone, so we're not that farther down the road.
I will get that, Zach, whenever, whenever Kenworth will tell him that these medium duties are available, and he knows he can get them into, well, Kenworth, I'm his first call, so. I said, I'll be careful on that tomorrow. I can't let up. I can't let up. That is good. Okay, well, proceed with that. The next one, I know I talked to you guys a little bit there after the meeting there last week, and I've been doing some homework and trying to figure out what to do. I know, I had times got away from, was it two years ago that we basically closed? Was it two years ago that we basically closed River Bottom Road? I know it's been somewhere in that year or two, we've had a horrendous, that horrendous slide down there and closed road and made it impassable. I know for the residents down there at Hanover Beach, if something happens on that hill, there's really no other way out, but there's multiple challenges down there to start with anyway. And I know, then when I did some of the investigating and had somebody kind of look at it, the number that was kind of bounced around was at one point one, one point two million to fix one spot, and there's so many other areas that were very questionable as far as how solid they were. You hate to spend a lot of money to fix five hundred feet and then you're closed again. Might be six months, might be six days, might be six years, just depending on what the road throws at us. What I'm proposing, I've got a proposal from Anderson to come in and do some road cores that would do some geotechnical studies on it. And what I kind of requested for that scope of work was to give me three options. That it's going to include ten road bores with a board out forty to fifty feet. That'll kind of give us an idea of what kind of stability is in there, and out of that study, then we would have basically three options. Figure out what we can do to stabilize the road, to possibly reopen it, the possibility of relocating the road, seeing if we can move it over into the bank a little bit, which that's going to get pricey, but at least then we'll have a solid number to look at. And of course, the third option is to do nothing, which is where I've kind of been so far. Third quote, to come in and do those ten cores up to fifty feet deep and kind of give us enough information that we would actually be able to put it out to bid if we so desire to kind of move forward with that cost estimate, whatever that might be, would be a grand total of forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. But at least then we've got a hard number and we know what we're looking at, because I know the projects that NDOT's done, it's been up there on one fifty-six and fifty-six, you know, those projects are into mitigants. Just from what I know in the industry, I know there was also some change orders that went on to that after their six million plus dollar project. We don't want to get into that, but at least then we've got solid reason for leaving the road closed or saying, hey, we might find another solution, so. If you guys are good with that, I would take that recommendation.
I think we need that information because then you can have, okay, when people come to you and say, well, why didn't you, well, because it was going to be this expensive? You know, if you come back and say, oh, no, we can move it a little bit, do it for far less, then we, but you won't know until.
We won't know until we get a little bit farther along and have that. And I know all engineers that I work with, everybody likes to have those studies, and you can see that it's all detailed out in here, so. I'm going to signature page to the top for you, Bobby.
Will all those cores be in the existing road bed?
Yes.
Will any of them be like, if you wanted to move it up the bank?
They'll be able to get all that from this core. They'll be able to tell where that is and predictability of just knowing the terrain, they'll be able to do that, so. We'll sign that afterwards if you're, if you.
John, do we accept the proposal from Anderson to do the soil borings on Hanover Beach Road to forty-three thousand?
Forty-three thousand, two hundred.
Two hundred.
And it's river bottom road, so you don't scare all the residents on Hanover Beach to death because they know they're getting ready to have a sewer project, so.
River bottom road.
River bottom road.
Any more question or discussion? If not, all those types, aye?
Aye.
The last one's a lot easier because, yeah, the dollar figures keep coming down. We know we've been updating our IT, and it's going to be updating some of our computers. The computer that I have tied directly to the fuel pumps, that spit out all of our information for billing to other departments, is tied on that computer, Windows seven is the only one it can operate on. To upgrade that to Windows ten, which is a necessity from what I'm hearing from our new IT, so I know this is coming, I reached out to find out what the upgrade was going to be and if it could be upgraded or what I was going to have to do. Company I used to work with was Tim Ross. He'd sold out, basically, that this company has gone to work for them, which it's, the quote came from Petroleum Group, but our service people are out of rural Kentucky that come in and take care of. Long story short, they'll be able to update that software, so I'll have to work with the IT department to make sure that they can get in and upgrade whatever they need to do. But to upgrade that's five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and no sense. Now, I get on their schedule to get that upgraded.
That's cheaper than I expected.
It was a lot, well.
I thought you was going to say fifteen.
When I first started looking at it and they talked to me when I had them update one of the things, because I can't remember what I was working with, anyway, they said, whatever you do, don't change that computer because it's going to cost you ten, fifteen thousand dollars, even if you have to take it off network or whatever, so. Like everything else in technology, if there's a little bit of competition going, it's out, you know, eventually some of those prices get down, and now Windows ten's been around long enough that, yeah, that five thousand wasn't near as bad as what I thought, but.
Seven's not so good at all, so.
It used to buy a lot more fuel than what it does now, so. That last tank though, it was only thirty-five thousand. It doesn't go, it doesn't go as far as what it used to, so. I get to play with big numbers and get lots of things rolling and try to stretch as far as we can.
I'll make a motion, we get your fuel computer for your files and stuff, I paid it to Windows ten with Petroleum Group for the five thousand and eighty-nine dollars.
Second one. Any more questions or comments? All those types, aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Bobby.
You're welcome. Yeah, outside of that, the aluminum box cover that we put in on eight fifty west was completed. Contractor actually knocked that out in three days, so beat it around on Thursday. We figured it was going to take him a week, but I think he put in just a little bit of extra time. Don't Run Project, I know we've been getting lots of phone calls on that. It was originally supposed to start on April the first, right in that neighborhood. Working with communication lines and getting phone lines and stuff moved took longer than what I anticipated. They were not quite as quick to respond when you didn't actually cut their lines, but we finally got that rerouted around. I told Mike to locate it, and he doesn't always like that comment from me. If I tell him I'm going to do it, I figure I'm not going to get out of that bill.
No, that's another bill that follows.
It will start, that project is scheduled to start May the second, so that is going to be going. I did get an update, just so folks know, that last I heard through the rumor mill that NDOT's probably going to start their fifty-six project about June the first, so there'll be about a thirty day window. I don't know if we can get Don't Run knocked out in thirty days, but because it's a pretty good sized job, we'll see what we can get done. Outside of that, we've just been trying to balance the carpet installs, the patching, the tree cleanup, the bush hogging, the ditching, the training, the safety, and future projects and constantly changing weather, and keep equipment maintained and running, so. That sounds real simple, though. Thank you, guys. I'll grab signatures after that, unless you guys send those for me.
We had, obviously, a semi went by GPS up on Telegraph, and he decided to turn around up there, so you can imagine the mess he made, but anyway, property owner was very appreciative. So Tella got recruited up there, thanks for dressing that up. It was, it was a mess, but anyway, it looks nice now, so tell me.
Will do. Yep, I'll pass it along.
Appreciate your work.
All right, thanks, Bobby. Thanks, guys.
All right, which one, Mike or Troy?
He volunteered me.
I was raised to be polite.
Because after Morgan.
Polite, I'll be better.
I'm not going to spend the money either. I wish, I know, I mean, goodness gracious, but I feel for you. I hate to even fill up my gas tank on my truck, let alone. First of all, Josh is going to be, Josh Klein, our ADA coordinator, he's going to be putting in what I call rumble strips, those orange rumble strips that you see at ADA parking places. He's going to be, he's going to be doing that all around the county, different places that are ADA marked. So what I've asked you to do, Bobby has graciously agreed to loan us, and I think he's going to probably rent them to me now, but some tall cones that he can put around the outside so people don't run over him as they're looking at their cell phone driving down the street, so. But he's going to be out there working and getting that done. Problem is, we've got a little bit of rain, so we've got to have some dry weather for the glue to dry and hold those mats down. So he's going to be doing that as catch as catch can. Probably he's going to start with the jail first, I'm thinking, that we're, you know, we get some spots there that need to be marked and those strips there. So I got something from the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, really doesn't cover the surveyor, but I think Bobby would be interested in this too, with our spacious county roads. It's planning season, guys, and I know it's real wet right now, but these tractors are going to be out on the road, so everybody be careful. And I don't want to get a lot of complaints about mailboxes being knocked down either, but that'll happen too, so. But just let you know, and I've got, I think, I don't know if y'all get a copy from him, but I'll copy just in case you do. The other thing is that folks on Hanover beat you very well aware of this, I'm sure, but FEMA has changed the insurance risk, and there's new guidelines and new criteria. They've changed the flood levels to the first floor now, not the, it's still the lowest floor, but it's the first floor level, not the ground level. So, but they've got all these wonderful things, we've got some of these in the, in the surveyor's office, but it's the new FEMA fact sheet, understanding risk rating two point O, and they call it equity in action, so I'll let you read it. I'm not going to explain it, but I'll let you read it, okay? I brought one of those for you. The other thing is, we are still wrestling with, I came back and asked you if we could send, if we could get Pat to send some letters out on some litigation. We have received no response to date, and this goes, this goes all the way back to January, some of the complaints go way back. What I'd like to do is take them to court, and I understand any motion from you guys to do that, I believe. So we're not getting any progress. In fact, the one on Paper Mill Road is really posing a danger to all the residents around there. There's a lot of dead ash trees in there, and you can see a big ash tree has fallen across the vacant house, but there's some around the edges too. And, I mean, you know, you're familiar with the area, there's subdivision behind, there's a nice house on the other side, it's all mowed around there, the only jungle is that lot. And we tried to get, catch up to this, the owner, haven't been able to catch up to him yet, so I think probably the only way to do it is take him to court. The other two just have not gotten it cleaned up to what I would say is a satisfactory level, so. And I don't know if we can do this on an ongoing basis where we could set a policy or a rule where we could, after Josh sends a letter, give them three or four weeks to respond. If they don't respond, then we just go ahead and escalate it to court, because we've been waiting. I mean, I, this was, this goes back probably to January when I was in here to request that, so. We'd like to move a little quicker on them if we could, but with the rain and everything, we probably couldn't get in there and clean them, but see what you guys think. We've got, we've got three locations right now, the three I was in here before on, so if you gentlemen are amenable, we'll go ahead and escalate that to the court level and have Pat file.
So have we, I know we normally, do we have a sheriff?
We've done, we've done both, both certified and sheriffs. The one, the one, the one on Paper Mill Road, his office keeps moving, he's gone from state to state, so we're going to find him. Once we find him, I want to get him into court. I mean, that's, that's the issue we're wrestling with.
There's a barn in that mess, too.
There's a barn in that mess, there's a big old house.
Concrete block barn.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
You can't see it.
You can't see, well, you can see it a little bit now because a lot of trees are falling down, so. But don't anybody get close to that lot because it's, those trees are coming down, especially with this wet weather. So, but if you gentlemen are amenable, we'll go ahead and get these three going now, and I'd like to see if we get some kind of policy, we'll see how this goes, and give them thirty days after the Pat letter and say, if you don't do it, let's, we're going to take it to court.
Do you, do you have a policy in mind or?
I would like to set it down that we can, Pat sends out his, you know, we basically follow our existing guidelines right now, where we first notify them, Josh sends a letter or I send a letter if I do, and then we see the follow-up, there's no follow-up, then we send a second follow-up. And we try to meet with the landowner or whoever's living there, and then if we don't get any response, then, then we go to Pat.
So let's, let's take that existing ordinance that we haven't updated and, well, I think we'll have to go through some hearings and stuff to do that, so we can put some timelines on them.
Sure.
What's your estate property maintenance code? Does it have any guidelines like?
Not really.
Kind of vague?
Kind of vague.
Okay.
It leaves that test local as far as this.
We have an ordinance, I have some teeth.
Right.
I'm in agreement with that, what they recommend.
So, so if we can get a, get a motion in, on these two properties we currently have, Pat's been working on, because he's got, I mean, he has not heard anything from these folks.
Another one, the other two are?
Give me your address. All right, I got them right here. One two seven seven Telegraph Hill Road, Bobby drives by it almost every day.
I know, well.
Fourteen forty-three East State Road fifty-six, that's the one outside of town. And then thirty-four ninety-five Paper Mill, because they're all two mile buffer. By the way, the one where the Winnebago was, it got kind of trashy, resided it, it's playing nut, so.
Good.
That's a good, good news story.
That's good, son.
Good news story.
Well, we kind of like, we're talking to the fire commission, if we don't do anything, then people aren't going to do anything. They're just, they're just going to think we've got cases like that, so if we make some, some movement and try to force the ordinance that's there, then people will notice.
These are, these are very noticeable properties.
Yeah, well, I mean, the others, but then the county might notice and.
Well, and we're getting good response from the Gilstrap property at two fifty in Seven. Yep, we're getting good response. The wet weather's kind of slowed him down, but he's, he's got a couple, the cars are gone, believe it or not, and he's got the trash, he's getting some dumpsters for those, so. I was out talking with him last week, so we're actually talking. So, just taking a motion.
So I'm going to, we take the next step with these three land parcels, residences, three forty, thirty-four ninety-five Paper Mill, twelve seventy-seven Telegraph Hill Road, and fourteen forty-three East State Road fifty-six to have Pat pursue legal action.
Any more comments or discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Mike. Hate to hint on a downpour, but Josh has been pretty busy doing those stuff, too. Building stuff going good, and flood zone's keeping him busy too, so we're, so he's, he said he's going to work the ADA stuff in and between, so he's, he's really saving himself some money doing it.
You're talking about those pads, like, you know, where it's changed and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I told him I'd help him with it. He's sharp, and so. Well, I told him that, too. He's going to have, he may not do anything. I said, he'll. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Troy?
As long as I can.
I think it's.
I think I mentioned this before this season, but part of what we do, we, EMA is County Jefferson County's representation on the Area Maritime Security Council with the Coast Guard, and they are sponsoring that cybersecurity workshop from CISA through FEMA, and I told you to mark your calendars or whatever. This is geared more towards business and government that is not IT, that doesn't have an IT background, so with everything that we've been talking about and everything that's going on, I mean, it may fit in, so I'm trying to share that as much as I can. Like I said, I told you guys to mark your calendars before, but that's, they've put that out just recently, so. I did receive the, the health department zoning paperwork for review back from Pat this afternoon, so I'll be starting to take a look at that and make sure the drawings are what we'd ask for, and so we'll be ready to get that hopefully submitted to the city and get on their, their calendars here coming up soon, so, just to give you a little follow-up on that. Any other questions or comments for me? I'm going to be quicker than I ever am.
It's not a, it's not a competition.
I understand.
You win. You win.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Don't hit me.
Hey, you, you, you rip, you.
Yeah, you must be most. Anybody from the community?
My name is Donna White. I live on County Road two fifty in between Kent and Deputy. Now, my problems don't seem near as big as what I thought they were after hearing all these things, but our, our road connects to ten twenty-five west, it kind of makes a loop off of Hendry and comes around to eleven hundred, and we've got some very dangerous spots, and I'm surprised that bus drivers haven't complained, but they're. But there's several washout spots to where if they meet somebody on the curve, I mean, the bus is just going to drop down in the ditch. And I wasn't sure whether, well, I talked to Heather and she said, "There's a meeting tonight." And I said, "Okay, I'll go." But so I was wanting maybe, after hearing some of this other stuff, can you just have somebody come out there, look and kind of give you an assessment of, I mean, we're really wanting to blacktop, but I know everything's so much more expensive now. If we could just get some general road maintenance. I know they added gravel a while back, but it's just sinking right in through the mud on 1025, or do you know where I'm talking about? Out by Mike Flynn's place. I mean, it just cools your car and, I mean, it tears up the vehicles. But probably the school bus safety is the biggest thing, I imagine. Like I said, if we could just get somebody up there to kind of assess things.
If you'll go on the website, on the Jefferson County website and the Highway Department and fill out that ticket. They don't have your contact information, so I can reach out and make sure we're on the same spot, the same page.
Okay.
That's the easiest way to get all that information in front of all of us.
Okay.
And we'll get...
Okay, everybody, everybody.
Also, there's a gravel road conversion program on there. You can fill that out for County Road 250 North. 1025 would be a separate one that somebody else would take and run with.
Okay. Okay. How do I get to it on the website, did you say?
You go to the Jefferson County website, JeffersonCounty.in.gov. And under Departments, you'll find Highway Department. And there's a gravel road conversion form and a form to submit a ticket right there.
Okay, okay.
That way we know who to call.
Right.
They call and say, "Hey, so and so's out here and I'm going out to fix roads." I fix what I think's the worst spot, and then we get a phone call, "They fixed the spot down the road, but they didn't fix mine."
I'm pissed all the time.
There's plenty of spots for me to pick to fix.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Anybody else? Sarah? Heather? No.
I don't have any.
Bobby?
I'll be brief. I'll try and break Troy's record. We had our insurance meeting this morning and things were a little bit higher January and February due to our couple of bad COVID cases we had, but then March it went down. So we're getting back on the right track. The good news is our specialty medications that are so exorbitant and expensive are now going to a different route to fill those. Sometimes people don't pay anything. And at this time, we've had a total savings of $47,107.28. So I know it's very expensive, don't like it, but our insurance are happy to offer it at this time. So we are doing pretty well for partially self-funded, best we can do for our employees and staff. So that's all I've got.
That's all.
So we published a request for proposal for a stormwater, a county stormwater master plan. So that's out there. We're supposed to get responses back by the 9th of May. Questions are due early next week, so we'll have a question to make sure we get answered. But so that's moving forward. We should get that. And basically, we want to establish some rules and guidelines on what needs to be done to manage stormwater. I mean, it's not going to be, let's go out and assess the county and see where stormwater problems are. We know they're there, but that would be getting a little pricey. But we just want to start the guidelines. So if someone's going to come in and develop something, it's going to say, okay, you're going to have to have this kind of stormwater management as part of your development. Because we see too many instances in the county and especially in the city where people have developed something and haven't done anything, and then the water ends up on someone else's property and they really right now have no feet to stand on, no legs to stand on. So that's kind of the main purpose. We'll establish a drainage board other than the commissioners because we were, I think all three of us were surprised that we were the drainage board, but no one had come talk to us about it. So that's out there. We also will have very shortly, probably early next week or next week sometime, instead of a request for proposal, this is going to be a request for qualifications for Jefferson Improving Ground Airfields Strategic Planning and Marketing Study. So one of the things, one of the projects we submitted for the Ready Grant was to use the airfield that's out there. Well, part of it was, it was very early and we're going to have to do some studying and planning. So we've kind of reached out and found some, the internet is great for those sorts of things, found some things that we can take from that. And so it's really kind of, we're really, I mean, we have a, maybe not more than a guess. Maybe it's a little more than a, maybe it's an educated guess on what are some possible uses for the airfield. But until you talk to folks who are in those businesses, you really don't know if it's plausible or not. So there are people that do these sorts of things out there, and that's what this would do, just kind of enlist someone like that and help us find out. I mean, we've thought, you know, can you use it for a maintenance facility? Can you use it for a cargo hauler or someone like that? Who's looking for, you know, we've been told that there's some airports that are paying a lot of money very early or much earlier than they thought for redoing the runways with one of these carriers. Like, okay, I go get my own runway and I can take care of it myself and not have to worry about other people. So anyway, something else that's recently come up is flight schools. We were told that Purdue is running out of space on their airport and they're looking for other places to hold flight schools. So that may be, you know, it's got three runways. None of them are in very good shape, but they're at least probably long enough for the kind of, hopefully for this kind of flight school. So anyway, that's some of our thoughts. But that's what, so that'll go out probably sometime next week. And I think we did get the, kind of the, it's still a draft, but a plan from our legal counsel on the American Rescue Plan Act plan for us to spend money. So we have to submit a report to the federal government by the 30th of April. So we've got some line items in there. We'll probably, for the first report, not list specifics, but we'll list a group of funds to go forward. But we're moving along with that. And so we've gotten some feedback and are able to, based on the federal guidelines, able to meet those requirements. There are some additional requirements that we found out about that the people who are allocated the funds are going to have to follow. So we'll have to make sure that everybody who gets this money spends it according to the rules because we can't have, yeah, it won't work the other way.
Can't go to Disney?
No, can't go to Disney. That wasn't one of those. They did loosen up some of the rules in the federal guidelines, but not that. Sorry. That's all I have.
That's all. Okay. We had another residential treatment training meeting today. The next one will be the 19th of May here. The three o'clock meeting is BS. If you like that, especially a bunch of guys. Then four o'clock is the meeting. So if you want to come for BS, show up at three. We kind of lay out what we're going to talk about.
Basic strategies?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. That's it. Anybody else? Is that it? I didn't have anything else. That's all today.
Does that move for your journey?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.